All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, October 16th, 2023 Board of Commissioners' Meetings. I'll call the meeting into order. The first item up tonight is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. As always, we do not have anyone sign up to do an invocation and lead us in a pledge of allegiance. I do open it up to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to do that, you may come forward and do so. Seeing as no one is jumping up, Ms. Kitty, would you do that for us this evening?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
All right, let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon Currituck County, upon our state, and upon our nation, and we ask that you continue to bless us. We ask a special blessing for our guests who are here tonight, first responders, and our law enforcement officers. We're so blessed for everything that they do to keep us safe, and we ask you to continue to bless them. We also tonight ask a special blessing on Israel and the people there, and please protect everyone and bring our hostages home safe. Continue to bless our great nation also. These things we ask in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have our ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder from our county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, the commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Wardens, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
I brought this up to the chairman as well as to the county attorney. The public hearing of Windswept Pines, Phase 3, I didn't vote on Phase 1 or 2, but Phase 3, my wife does have a company that she would receive $140 a month if that was approved, so I would like to be recused, just so I'm on the up and up.
Okay, so when we get to that, I'll ask for the board to light a step down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, my son works for Allied Properties. His employment is not contingent upon approval or denial of this, and it really has minimal to do with this project at all.
Right. Does that rise to the level of asking him?
Does his involvement with Windswept Pines, do you have a fixed opinion that's not subject to change?
No, not at all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes or additions tonight? I don't think we have any. If not, can I have a motion for approval, please?
To move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Second from Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is public comment. I do not have anyone signed up this evening for public comments. Is there anyone that arrived late that would like to speak at public comment this evening? All right. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment and move on to commission reports. And I'll start with you tonight, Ms. Kitty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Currituck County Plains and Plows was a great success last Saturday. A big thank you to the Currituck Extension staff and the airport team and everyone who worked hard to make it a very successful event. The weather didn't cooperate in the afternoon, and I did get a little wet, but it sure looked like everyone was having lots of fun, come rain or shine. On Friday night, I attended Currituck High School homecoming with my granddaughter. From their big win to the amazing performance by the band, to the homecoming court, and the well-behaved students, it was quite an enjoyable experience, thanks to everyone who works hard to make these special events happen here in Currituck County. The Social Service Department would like to announce that applications for Operation Santa starts today and runs through November the 22nd. If you're in need of any assistance, please reach out to their department at 252-232-3083. Also, on Monday, the night, I attended the Commission on the Future of North Carolina Elections Meeting. The Commission spent five hours covering topics related to North Carolina elections, including a detailed presentation for the North Carolina Board of General Counsel, Paul Cox. We were also reminded of the slow expansion of voting rights over the years through a presentation by Professors Martha Cough and Chris Cooper. Other steering committee members outlined the election commission is in the natural growth of learning from the North Carolina Trusted Election Tures from 2022, and we hope to bring this election tour to Currituck County in the early 2024s after filing closes. Last but not least, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so make sure everyone gets their yearly mammograms. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Well, Kitty hit on most of the things. I also attended the Plows and Plains event. It was fantastic. It was a little damp, but the kids had a great time. The COA area that had a demonstration of some of the programs there, the extension and their contest, and the air show itself, the dogfight that they put on, it was fantastic, and I thoroughly enjoyed myself, and would encourage you, if you didn't attend this year, make it, mark it on your calendar for next October. It was fantastic. Also, on the note of breast cancer awareness, I do want to encourage all women to use this month as awareness, to celebrate your friends and families who are survivors, like our own Kitty Etheridge, and to remember those we've lost to that terrible disease, like my Aunt Sue. So do your diligence so you can be here for your family in the future. Get your mammogram. And finally, I attended our latest JCPC meeting on Monday, it was, last Monday. It was an excellent presentation of what we hope to do. Our past program, our teen court, and our restitution programs are strong, and it is a testament to the work of many, including our law enforcement, who keep our youth who are at risk hopefully moving towards the right path. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll follow up on you. I failed to mention Mike Payment is out sick this evening. He just came back from Europe, and I don't know what he brought with him, but he didn't sound good today. So hopefully for a speedy recovery for Mike, he'll be back up and running again soon. The board recently had a multi-day work session. That video, we videoed that and it's live on YouTube. It took a few days to get that up and running. We had to do some editing, et cetera, to get it up. So for those of you that are interested in what we talked about, that is up online. We covered all kinds of stuff in Corolla and the mainland, and we ended up finishing up, left a few things on the table, so we will be having some other work sessions in the near future to cover a couple of things that were left, as all of us had to be other places, it seems, on Thursday. So again, just look for that. Those are, as always, open to the public. We don't often film those. It is really best practice, at least according to what we've been taught at the school of government, to not do that, to allow us to have a free flow of ideas, to talk, and not have somebody commenting every time you said something, "Did you hear what he said? Did you hear what he said?", et cetera, and then formulate those ideas and move forward with whatever policy may change. But this one was open to the public, and, or all of them are, and available to be viewed by the public. And that'll do it for me. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was with great regret that I could not be at Plains and Plows, because it is, in fact, a wonderful event. I did, however, have the opportunity to participate with Corolla Fire, Volunteer Fire Department's 40th Anniversary. It was in chief shortways in the crowd. It was an amazing event. It was thoroughly enjoyable. And, Ms. Kitty, I got wet, too, but I was in the dunk tank. So it was for a good cause. I'm sure it raised at least six or seven...
Two million dollars.
Seven dollars. But it was a lot of fun, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
This Saturday night, Sheriff's Office Community Night, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It's a completely free event. You can wear your costumes. If you're an adult, you can wear your costumes. PG costumes. Don't wear something crazy. That is at the high school, and the overflow parking will be at Currituck Middle School. It's a great event. We have a few food trucks, coffee truck. If somebody wants, that's the only thing you'd have to pay for, but there's bounce houses, all kinds of public safety, all kinds of neat stuff, our SWAT team, everything. So great event. Last year, we had probably about 800 people. I'm hoping we have the same, probably, if not more. I didn't attend Plains and Plows. I did. William is now a certified message board. He can work the thing just as good as the few of us that know how to work it at the sheriff's office, so I've got him trained, and I'm glad. So I helped him with that. But he did a great job in the extension. They always do. Speaking of the extension, Christmas parade is the 1st of December. I started getting applicants in July, so I guess people were, like, ready. So shoot me an email to either one of my county emails if you want to sign up for the Christmas parade. I want to, that's the Friday, the first Friday of the month, 12/1, 7:00 p.m., at the, by the YMCA complex. And we might have to change a little bit this year, because it grows every year, so where everybody goes. I just wanted to mention, and I know we've had in the last month of October, we've had probably about five or six county employees retiring. I'm going to forget somebody, and they always say you don't name people when you forget somebody, but I'm going to name a couple that I directly work with on a regular basis and wish them well. Gina Mauer, who ran our animal shelter and animal control, did a great job for the county, and she just left in October, and wish her well. And Peggy Whitlow from finance, who did an excellent job. And there's a few more in the month of October. If I forgot you, I apologize. But good luck to them, and thanks for their service. And that's it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Helen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Kevin on the retirements of dedicated county employees. The Mo Yacht Volunteer Fire Department's Community Day, which was this past Saturday, was rescheduled because of the weather to October the 28th, same time, 10 to 3, and at the middle school. And lastly, the other night, I was sitting in my chair, and about 10:30, the doorbell rang. And I said, "Who in the world is ringing a doorbell at 10:30?" So I got up, went to the door, and it was Deputy Calvin Thornton. Renee had gone out to the truck and left the lights on in the truck, and he rode by, patrolling the neighborhood, and happened to see the lights on, and he stopped to let us know. He didn't know who I was or she was, but to me, that spoke volumes about the type of dedicated service our law enforcement officers are providing, just not arresting people or speeders, but community service type of things. And I'd like to commend him and give him a shout out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman.
Last but not least, Kevin. There, over there in the corner. Oh, sorry. I was just rolling around the table. I won't give a shout out to our planning director. Kevin is leaving us. This will be his last meeting, and so he gets to sit at the big table this time instead of down at the kid's table. We will message Kevin. Thank you for your efforts while you've been here at Currituck County. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, since your last meeting, the local government commission approved the county's financing for the Tulsa Creek Elementary School in an amount not to exceed $60 million. It was interesting that we were able to participate in the meeting. In fact, we were asked to participate, as it was expected that Treasurer Falwell would have some questions about our application. In fact, the treasurer, when they got to our matter, kind of spent some time talking about not just how he was surprised by the cost of our project, but by what they're seeing across the state, local government project cost. In response, I agree with him. Certainly, we were surprised that we were now seeing all of our projects coming in at two to three times what our estimates are originally. So it's a situation that we're facing, for some reason, with everybody else in the state, and some in our region here, like Camden County and Chawan County, which are seeing their high school projects increase two to three times the original estimated cost. Our explanations must have been good enough in that the local government commission approved our application unanimously. On Wednesday, our bonds will be sold. We were told by our financial advisors that there's been a recent rally in the tax exempt bond market, such that we might well expect to see a true interest cost in our bonds of less than 4%. That will be fantastic, given that we had been estimating a worst-case scenario of 9%. So we'll know by the end of the day, Wednesday, of what the bids are on our bonds as they're issued. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Megan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Adjustment held a meeting this past Thursday where they heard an application for a variance regarding a lot in Crowe Beach, and specifically Seagull subdivision. That variance was granted despite staff's recommendation.
And I assume you're going to have more for us in the closing session around that. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have administrative reports, and it's good to see so many people in the room tonight. So thank you all for coming out this evening. First up, we have our sheriff's office presenting life-saving awards and advanced law enforcement certificate presentations. And we have our sheriff here, Sheriff Matt Biker, to do the honors this evening, and Kevin, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, after the sheriff does the advanced certificates and hands out to those, and I think the chief's going to help him, the chief deputy, I was going to call Chief Melton and Deputy Chief Richard Lane, where they can do the life-saving awards and do all that at once.
All right.
I want to say thank you to the commissioners of the county for allowing us to recognize the deputies who have achieved their advanced law enforcement certificate. This is a significant educational event. We do this to recognize them, congratulate them, and show the county that continued education and training is very important to the Currituck County Sheriff's Office. So the deputies that are here that have achieved their advanced certificates, if you'd come up, please, stand up here, hold your certificate. You're right here. I'm sorry. They should be right there. If y'all will stand up here, face the crowd, please.
Thank you for the attention.
Hold your certificates right there. And I'm going to read the certificate. This is from the state of North Carolina.
I think he's got it.
This is from the state of North Carolina, Department of Justice, North Carolina Sheriff's Education and Training Standards Commission. It says, "Greetings, by virtue of the authority vested in it by the laws of the state and recognition of the attainment of the training and educational objectives commensurate with the role of a professional law enforcement officer and a personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina. The Attorney General, the Chairman, and the members of the North Carolina Sheriff's Education and Training Standards Commissions, through authority vested in them by the laws of the state, do hereby grant you your North Carolina Advanced Law Enforcement Certificate. Congratulations." Be taken with caution to the community. Thomas Voorhees, Eric Holsey.
Danielle Crowe.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
We also had a couple that couldn't attend tonight. Sergeant Chris Saunders, he was sick. Sergeant Tim Holub, I'll take their certificates back when we leave tonight. And Detective Jeremiah Hunter. All three of those guys had attained theirs as well. And then at this time, if we could call the deputy chief and the chief up from firing EMS to present the life-saving awards. So if you guys don't mind, I'm going to say something.
Absolutely.
It's a quick synopsis of the two events that we are going to...
That we're going to be discussing. So what we want to do is, we want to discuss and recognize tonight, the individuals, our first responders, and how they handle these situations, arriving, being professional, and seamlessly working together for a positive outcome for each patient. So I'm going to read two scenarios, and then after those, both of those scenarios, I'm going to list the individuals and have them step up to receive a certificate of recognition, as well as a challenge coin. On July 11th, Currituck County Dispatch Center received a call in reference to a bicyclist that has been struck by a vehicle on Ocean Trail with bystander CPR in progress. Currituck County Fire EMS, Corolla Fire Rescue, Currituck County Sheriff's Department was dispatched. Upon arrival, within minutes, Corporal Thomas Voorhees arrived with bystander CPR continuing. He applied his AED and delivered two shocks. With those shocks, the patient regained a pulse. Medic 62, Engine 66, arrived on that scene. Excuse me. I didn't bring my reading glasses.
Chief Melton, you want to give them these?
Medic 62, Engine 66, arrived on scene, confirmed that there was a pulse, and respirations were present. They initiated advanced life support. Nightingale was auto-launched. Battalion 106 arrived and coordinated that effort with the Corolla, excuse me, with Corolla Fire and Rescue. That particular patient was a 70-year-old male who was visiting from New York. He is now back at work, full recovery, and his family is actually watching this event live right now.
Wow.
And I will go back and read the names of those individuals in just one moment. The second call that we're looking to recognize, on August 5th, Medic 2 was dispatched to respond to a motor vehicle accident involving a car versus a motorcycle. Law enforcement arrived on scene first, followed by the medic unit, obviously. Advised the operator of the motorcycle, had an open fracture, and a tourniquet had been applied. Medic 2 arrived to find a conscious male with an open tib fracture and a partially amputated lower left leg. Nightingale, again, was requested. Patient was immobilized, secured, moved to the ambulance. ALS care continued. And again, patient was received by the hospital. He has also had his leg, the update, has, excuse me, he's had repair to the leg, and he's going through rehab as it stands right now. So I'm going to go back. First call. What I am going to do is to call forward right now, these individuals that were involved in the call. Some of the people are not here due to some circumstances. I'm still going to read their names. If Corporal Thomas Voorhees, please step forward. Deputy Patrick Morgan, please step forward. Chief, Sheriff's got him. Lieutenant Charles Crawford. Lieutenant Jeffrey Pickett. Paramedic firefighter Jeff Gearhart. Paramedic firefighter Cody Judge. Advanced EMT firefighter Devin Grover. Advanced EMT firefighter Stephen Gray. EMT firefighter Dallas Hawks. Dispatchers Aaron Peaton and dispatchers Charles Porter. And then Chief Richard Shortway. Corporal Voorhees, his rapid response and his immediate actions saved this gentleman's life, delivering two shocks, converting him.
Do you guys have those on all the...
The supervisors have them. And one thing I'd like to say, too, like the sheriff said, far as, like, training at our department, we're supposed to have, with the new SROs, and I don't want to say the number wrong, I guess we're supposed to have 70. Our number goes up to 80, but a couple of them are part-time. I believe we, me and Sergeant Holub, were talking about it this morning, I believe we have 11 deputies, which most of the time, we are the guy that arrives there first, because we're out riding around. 11 of our deputies are EMT certified.
Okay.
So that's, you know, over 10%, obviously.
Yeah.
But, like I said, so it's a lot of times, like with Corporal Voorhees, Tom's former military marine, you know, hard worker, great guy, you know, somebody's alive. Compliment to him.
All right. Congratulations to you all.
For the second call, I would like to call up Deputy TJ Mercer, paramedic firefighter And in this particular case, again, law enforcement, with the placement of the tourniquet, stopping the bleeding, and allowing EMS to arrive on scene to complete destabilization and get the patient to the right place, has put us in a position where both patients have a positive outcome. I also would like to add a, one special note to both of my captains who took the time to write this up. Captain April L. Moore wrote up this particular call for these individuals, and Captain Sam Dahl wrote up the first call.
All right.
And in closing on my part, I would like to thank all of our first responders for their service to our county. They do a fantastic job.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Just, Chairman, if I could, just, Leanne wrote up a little, just a resolution, which I'm going to present to both of those guys, to the deputies, as well as with what, it's basically the same thing what Richard read, so I'm not going to read it, but I will tomorrow. Tom, I'll see you, and TJ, I'll see you Wednesday, so I'll give them, there's a, and I'd like to thank her for doing that, the resolutions, basically just pretty much what Richard said, so we won't read it twice, but good job to all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That is a perfect illustration of volunteers working together with paid staff and how it all works together. So thank you all for everything you do for this county in keeping us safe.
Chairman, if we would, I don't know if anybody wanted to take, like, a picture with their family or something, maybe take, like, a little five-minute recess or something, let them do that.
We can do that. Absolutely. Yep. We'll recess for five minutes, and then we'll get back into it.
Have family members here or whatever.
Okay. Take five minutes. Everyone that serves this county faithfully and excels in the performance of their duties. Next up this evening, we have our Fire and Emergency Medical Services, our department head, Chief Melton's here. Head Chief Melton's here to talk about everything Fire EMS-related, right?
Brief update?
All right. You're welcome, Chief.
Thank you, thank you. So we've got a slide presentation, can you see that up there?
Yes, sir.
You might have to, LeAnn, does he have to point?
Clicker, okay.
Yeah, I do have to click her. Let me see if that works. There we go.
Yep.
There we go.
All right. So who we are, we provide advanced life support level emergency medical services to the entirety of Currituck County. In addition to that, we provide the lead fire suppression services in two districts in the county, those being in Corolla and Knott's Island. In addition to that, on the mainland, we assist the contracted volunteer fire departments with the delivery of fire suppression services and hazard mitigation. We are a unique department in the fire division. We are the only fire department that is completely dual role and cross-trained. We provide fire and EMS from, fire-based EMS, we call it, from a fire department in the fire division. We're the only ones in northeast North Carolina that do that. We also have the only advanced life support certified engines in northeast North Carolina, the two in Corolla and one in Knott's Island. So those are the things that make us unique, and I would say...
Chief, could you please explain the significance of an ALS engine, please?
Okay, an ALS engine has ALS-trained and certified staff on it, so it can...
Which stands for?
Advanced Life Support, Advanced Life Support, so a paramedic on an engine company, and they carry all of the equipment minus a stretcher that the ambulance has. They have drugs, they have advanced airway equipment, they have all medical equipment that we have on the ambulance, more or less, and they can provide that level of advanced life support care until an ambulance arrives. And they can also assist the ambulance in a complicated call like a cardiac arrest or severe trauma or something like that. You've got, everybody on that truck is cross-trained and delivers EMS. They spend part of their shift on staffing an ambulance, part of their shift staffing So this is a graphic illustration of where our response assets are deployed. So we have five ambulances on the mainland and one QRV on the mainland, and that's what this depicts. On the outer banks, we have two advanced life support engines and two ambulances and a QRV, in addition to a advanced life support four-wheel-drive ambulance in the off-road area in Carova Beach. And we also have an advanced life support engine and medic unit in Knott's Island. So nine ambulances, three engine companies, two QRVs with supervisors, and the QRVs are advanced life support licensed as well, and carry all of the advanced medical equipment, like those engine companies. So this illustrates our call volume, and this is to date. It break down the units, medic unit, medic one through eight, and I'll briefly go over where the units are located. Medic one is Powell's Point, two is Waterlily, three is Moayak, four is Sligo, five is Grandy, six is Corolla, 62 is Pine Island, seven is Carova Beach, and eight is Knott's Island. You can see that medic three, in September, ran 110 calls. That's so, that was this past September. So you can kind of see how that stacks up. The next slide's got the fire units and QRVs on it, so you can see what they do in comparison. So this, again, this pie graph shows you where most of the calls are, and what this is telling us is, is that most of our EMS calls are on the mainland, and most of those are pretty much even between the Moayak unit and the Sligo unit, at 18% each. And then as you go north to south, the calls, the amount of calls that the units get in the districts decrease. So three and four are the busiest, and as you go south, two is a little bit less, five is a little bit less than that, one is a little bit less than that. So that's the trend.
And what drives that? Is that just population density?
It's pretty much population. If you look at where the density is, it pretty much reflects it. Call averages per day, medic units collectively, we're running about 20 calls a day. If you add in the engine and QRV responses, we're running about 30 emergency calls per day.
And that's county-wide, correct, Chief?
That is county-wide, yes. Number of employees, our EMS division and our fire division are pretty much, they are evenly split in as far as the number of full-time employees at 54 each. We have five employees assigned to administration, which gives us a total of 113, and this does not talk about, we also have 20 part-time employees in just an EMS division. Training, department-wide combined total training hours, as you can see, 7,459. In the training realm, the deputy chief is going to, he's going to talk about, so we're, Currituck Fire EMS is participating in a regional effort to grow our own paramedics through cooperation with College of the Albemarle. Matter of fact, deputy chief and one of our captains were assisting in teaching today. They're teaching some advanced airway class today for that group.
So our organization currently has, can you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. Our organization currently has seven employees that are enrolled in this program. We have four employees doing the academy, which would be, it's a 30-week program, very intense program, and it just jams a year and a half of education into that 30-week span. And then we have three employees going through a traditional program, which actually started this week. Very intense, they learn, well, first, there's a national shortage of paramedics, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, so for us to have seven paramedic students in place right now is significant. The state last year only graduated 75 total paramedics, so that's not even a paramedic per county. So we're supporting that, and we appreciate you guys continuing to support that, obviously. Very intense, though, myself, and as you said, Captain Fleming, we're there today, we worked on airway management, and we just have a long way to go. Sorry for the feedback.
Well, thank you.
Future plans, so we're talking about where most of our EMS calls are on the mainland. We have identified the need to add a sixth medic unit to the mainland, and we are recommending that it go where most of the calls are, which is between Moayak and Sligo. So we, that's what we're open for, a medic unit and then a north-end supervisor to assist with responses and supervision.
So Chief, if I could just intervene for one quick second, so if we have a six, just so everybody, if anybody's at home watching this, or they're watching paint dry, no, I'm just kidding, not y'all, but the meeting in general, so we would, if you had a six, you would have three, we always, with the sheriff's office, divvy up like at the 7/11, so we would have three medics units north of the Waterlily Bridge and three south of the Waterlily Bridge, correct?
That's correct, and a supervisor and a QRV at each, on both sides.
Thank you.
Right now, we just have five and one, and the ones to the south.
Yeah.
The QRV supervisor.
Thank you.
Yes.
More of an observation, I guess, can you talk about how you stage them? So you get a call down the county or somewhere, and you guys are constantly moving equipment around, right?
We are.
Just so people understand, kind of, you're playing a show game all the time.
All the time, all the time. So if two medic units on the mainland are on calls, sometimes if one gets a call, it doesn't affect, they don't all have to be moved, but if at least two of them do, then they have to be reshuffled, if you will. The supervisor realigns where they are to provide the very best response time with the remaining units, so they're almost constantly being moved, because there's no, there's not, there is no station that's got two ambulances in it, right? So if that ambulance is out of position, and the one next to it is also out of position, then an ambulance has to be relocated to provide the best response possible. So that's something that's only going all the time.
Speaking of responses, how do we rank compared to our neighboring counties and then statewide?
So the state benchmark for ambulance response time, for EMS response time, is 10 minutes or less 90% of the time, and we consistently meet that. We do, we have a peer review that's quarterly, and that's one of the things that's tracked, is our shoot time and our response time and our scene time and all of those things, and we consistently meet that, and we are better than most of the larger departments in Hampton Roads. Our average response time is better than the larger EMS systems in Hampton Roads, and we're at the same or better than our peers here in northeast North Carolina.
Now, how do we rank in terms of having advanced life support on the ambulances?
So we have, our normal staffing on an ambulance is a paramedic and either an advanced EMT or an EMT basic, and we more consistently do that than any of the other agencies in northeast North Carolina. We more consistently have paramedics on the ambulances than the others. We sometimes run an advanced truck with the supervisor responding if paramedic level care is needed. We do that less often and in smaller numbers than anybody else in the region, south of the state line.
Can you expand or expound a little bit on the material readiness specifically? I know it, the ambulance wait time is now three years. We went up having one, you know, get totaled in, I guess it was duck because of somebody that fell asleep.
Right, the Pine Island unit, yes, sir. So that, we just took delivery of the unit to replace that one, it was two summers ago, that it was involved in the accident, and it was, ended up being totaled, unfortunately, and we just took delivery of that one, and that was two years plus to get that unit in, and that's going to go in service any day now. And we've got two more four-wheel-drive vans for Corolla and, for the Corolla to give us four-wheel-drive response out there, and those are coming in any time, any day now, but we ordered those two years ago, I think. And we just ordered two more ambulances that we need for the mainland, and we were told that the turnaround time for those could be up to 34 months. And they're saying now that it's not so much the supply chain, which is what they were saying, but shortage of manpower and staff in the construction.
Chief, I'd just like to say to you and the deputy chief, LeAnn, I work with you guys day in and day out. Everybody is professional, they always have a smile, they're knowledgeable. Like I said, I know we have 11 deputies that went April, did a great job training, teaching, we've taken CPR with you guys, just everybody in your staff, I have never had, in 20-some years, a negative experience. I mean, you guys really top-notch, and if anybody's watching, you know, like, I mean, they're lucky. I mean, we have really good first responders in the county, especially with, you know, the services that provides, the life saves that we've shown tonight, and it's a great place to live, and you guys are just, it's, I mean, hats off to you. Appreciate all y'all doing it.
Thank you, I think we have a great team. Thank you.
We are blessed.
Yep, it seems obvious that we have good leadership because people follow leaders, and you guys seem to, you stood behind your people and got them all trained, and we're not seeing near the problems that other places are, so thank you again.
One, sorry, one final question.
Yes.
And you can throw a lifeline if you need it. What's a normal ambulance cost? What's a four-wheel-drive van cost? And what's a typical fire engine cost?
Okay, the latest on the ambulance is 360, give or take. One of the van ambulances was roughly half of that, about $150,000. So big cost savings there. We were able to purchase two four-wheel-drive van ambulances for the price of one street ambulance, just traditional street ambulance.
And then an engine's got to be right around that too, right?
Engine now, four...
Engine's probably sitting at about six, almost eight?
720.
Yeah.
And when are those two engines? Because we have two on order, correct?
We do.
And when's the first of those arriving?
May or July, between...
One will be May-July.
May-July, 24.
September, October. I think the other one is September, October.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Chief.
We're actually going to be sitting down with Chief Last Miller in the next two weeks.
Spec his, Roger? I'm sorry, spec Carovas.
Right. All right.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, DC.
All right, next up, Kevin, we ready? Yep, okay.
I'm ready.
All right. All right, next up, we have a public hearing, PB 16-06, Windswept Pines, Phase 3.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself of that $140 a month that my wife brings in.
I need a motion to allow Kevin to...
I move.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Give me what I'm needed.
All right, the applicant owner, Allied Properties LLC, is requesting a preliminary plat use permit with 14 residential lots located in Phase 3 of Windswept Pines, that is Tax MAP 9, Parcel 6A, and the Moayak Township. Kevin, get out of the door.
As you heard, this is a preliminary plat special use permit. This is for a major subdivision. It is for Phase 3 of Windswept Pines. Phases 1 and 2 have been approved and have been developed with single-family homes. This is for the last 14 lots in the subdivision. The site is located at the far east of the existing Windswept Pond subdivision. It is off Baxter Road. The recently-approved Baxter Station subdivision is directly across the street. Here's a more detailed view. The property is zoned CMXR. You may remember it because this board did conditionally rezone the property to CMXR October 4, 2021. Majority of the zoning is single-family. It does also include one site that is being developed commercially, and that is right along the highway. This shows the phases of development. Phase 1 is the westernmost part. Phase 2 is in the middle. Each of these phases consisted of 29 lots. As I said, they are all developed. Phase 3 is shown here in green, all the way to the right, and contains 14 lots. The phase will be an extension of Alden Road, so the road right now dead-ends, it will extend through, as well as there will be a stub out to the north for future development. Also included in this phase with stormwater is increasing the two existing stormwater ponds, 4A and 4B. They will be increased in size. Street trees and sidewalks are proposed along both sides of the street. Type B buffer is proposed along the northern and southern property lines, and it will maintain a 50-foot farm buffer to the agricultural land it is adjacent to. In the rezoning request, there were seven conditions of approval. I wanted to go over those real briefly with you. The first was that the use is a subdivision. It is. The second is that the lots are over 20,000 square feet, which they are. The third is that it was modeled for stormwater to the 100-year storm event. The fourth is to explore existing drainage outlet to the east. The fifth is development will be for single-family and conformed to the submitted elevations, which were with the rezoning request. The sixth is that no parking signs will be installed, and the seventh is that drainage improvements to the north and east of the development, as shown on Attachment C. Now, Attachment C is on page 7 of your agenda, but if you'll remember, this was the drainage improvements that went north and then east. Staff, we looked at this condition, we watched the first hearing on it, and really, it was represented to this board before they voted on the item, that the rights of entry to the other properties had been obtained, when in fact, they have not. So I think the applicant can speak more to if anything has happened along this, but from a staff standpoint, that seventh condition is voided, just because we, you know, the rights of entry were never, never there. To go over the infrastructure real quickly, it's on public water. Each site has onsite septic. As I mentioned, there are five-foot sidewalks along both sides of the street. The connectivity score for the property is 2.0, which meets the minimum of 1.4. As I mentioned, the stormwater will be designed to the 100-year storm. There are no streetlights proposed. Street trees and type B buffers will be installed. And lastly, a payment in lieu of dedication is proposed with the neighborhood. As far as schools go, the students from this development are assigned to Moayak Elementary and Middle Schools. I have listed here the committed capacities of these schools. Moayak Elementary is 95%, Moayak Middle is 82%, Currituck High School is 88%, and JP NAP is 90%. This development will generate three elementary school students, one middle school student... school students, one middle school student, and one high school student. It's also worth noting, as you are well aware, that there is a new elementary school in Moayak that is scheduled to be completed in August of 2025. The technical review committee reviewed this item and had the following four comments. The first was to resolve a mapping discrepancy with the Army Corps, and this was just about the location of the jurisdictional ditches and what's on the property. The applicant to speak to whether this is resolved, but I believe it has been. The second is currently, the developer does not have the right of entry to address Condition 7. That's what I spoke to earlier where staff reviewed that condition and made a determination that it's really voided. The third is that the detailed review by the stormwater consultants will be done during the construction drawing review. The last comment was that the correct flow hour is from ponds 4A and 4B, and that has been addressed.
Before you jump into the next one, Kevin, the drainage to the northeast, since you've looked at that meeting, didn't the owners of that land come in as well and talk about that they were willing to grant access at that meeting?
Yes, and there has been some discussions. Dylan Lloyd with our stormwater has been in discussions with both the applicant and the property owners. What happened is, we just watched the meeting, and it was really depicted as if those rights of entry had been obtained already, when in fact, yes, we may be working towards it, or the applicant and those property owners, but that right of entry to this time, to my knowledge, is not, not obtained.
Okay, thank you.
The site is in the Moayak Small Area Plan. It is a full-service designation. In the full-service designation, typical densities range from 1.5 to 3 units per acre. This development density is 0.9 dwelling units per acre. There is one policy that is applicable, and that is to promote compatibility between new and existing development to avoid adverse impacts to the existing community. In the Imagine Currituck Plan, the site is designated G2, Controlled Growth. This is compatible with medium-density residential developments. The density in the G2 is up to two dwelling units per acre, which, as I stated in the previous slide, this development falls under that at .9. There are nine goals and policies that may be considered with the Imagine Currituck. I'll real briefly run through them. Land use goal policy 1 is to encourage development at appropriate densities. Land use policy 1.2, consider the small area plans, which this is in the Moayak Plan. Land use policy 1.3, consider community character and establish visions. Infrastructure and community services goal 1, ensure sufficient services to support the associated growth. Policy 3.1, new development should connect county water systems at the expense of the developer. Infrastructure goal 4, improve stormwater management throughout the county. Policy 7.2, continue enforcement of the adequate public facilities ordinance. Goal 8, ensure public services remain at sufficient levels for superior service. And lastly, Moayak land use policy 2.1, properly manage the increased urban level of growth in Moayak. And with that, I will leave the special use permit review standards up and stand by for any questions.
It occurs to me that I don't do a swearing-in. You're supposed to help me out on that.
That's correct. We did not, so we need to do that. Definitely need to do that.
Thank you.
Do I have to repeat what I said?
No, we'll let you attest. We'll let you attest to that. How's that sound?
On notice of what you just testified.
Would you repeat the question?
Right. So, anybody that's going to participate, going forward, please come up to be sworn-in. All right. We're good. All right, hands are in there. All right. Do you swear affirm the information that you're going to give, so that it will be the whole truth, or that you have testified to will be the whole truth, so hope you got... Thank you. All right. Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin, could you please explain the significance of Condition 7? Why was that a condition put on this subdivision in the first place?
Well, it was in response to concerns that were raised about the drainage in that area, particularly as the water came south to that main Baxter Road ditch. There were issues with that ditch where the water wasn't flowing and the ditch was overflowing.
And how's that flow now that, obviously, they haven't got permission to do it? So, are there still problems with this area backing up into Baxter Lane and the homes that the people who showed up back in October of 2021 to complain about this?
I'm not sure if they've experienced any flooding since. I will say that drainage is improving along that ditch, if for no other reason than there were improvements associated with the Baxter Station development, which share that ditch. So, as the water comes across Baxter, as they clean out that, the ditch would flow, flow better. As far as input from those neighbors, staff did not receive any input on this, but I do believe that condition was from when they came to speak at the, at the first hearing.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe ultimately, at the end of Baxter Station, there was a crushed pipe or covert pipe.
Undersized.
Undersized, and that has now been replaced and landed or repaired. That's kind of a statement or question, if you know the answer to that question.
I know Dylan was working with the applicant. Has it been? It is in the process. You know, the county worked with the property owners, got rights of entry for it, and so it is in the process of being replaced with an appropriate size pipe.
So, when you say it's in the process, have they dug it up? They've just planned on it? I mean, like, where in the process are we?
I will let the applicant speak to that, as they are the ones performing the work, and I'm not entirely sure.
Okay. All right. Anything further for Kevin? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Good evening.
Could we have the presentation pulled up, please? Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I'm Jamie Schwaeder with Parker Poe here on behalf of the applicant tonight. This request, as you know, is for a special use permit for the last phase of the Windswept Pines development. This was before the board in 2021, and we'll address the questions that Commissioner Jarvis raised in just a moment. This is the last phase of the Windswept Pines development, and we will be here before you tonight because we need a, one last special use permit. And as the board knows, will be required to prove by competent material and substantial evidence the four factors that you see on your screen. Tonight, you'll hear from Mark Bissel, a registered professional engineer with extensive experience in the county, testifying as to Factors 1, 3, and 4, Site Layout, Safety, Plan Conformity, Conformance with the UDO, and Utilities and Available, Availability of Stormwater and Relative Utilities. You'll also hear from Mr. Hunter Howell, a licensed North Carolina real property appraiser with Valbridge, who will offer testimony as to Factor 2, Impact as to Value and Harmony with the surrounding area. And we may call other witnesses as needed. We appreciate your patience. We know that this is, we'll hear similar issues and similar testimony as to other permits that you've granted in the past, but we each case stands on its own, and we're happy to provide that testimony here tonight with respect to this special use permit. So, at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Mark Bissel. Mr. Bissel, could you please state your name and address to the board?
Mark Bissel, 3512 North Croatan Highway.
And can you explain your experience for this board?
I've got a degree in civil engineering from Duke University. I'm a registered professional engineer in North Carolina. I've been practicing on this kind of project for more than 40 years now.
At this time, I'd like to tender Mr. Bissel as an expert in the field of civil engineering and site layout.
Excuse me, that didn't come out of the way. Is the board okay with that? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bissel, can you explain your role in this project for the board?
I oversaw the layout of the project, the drainage, the utilities, particularly in the last two phases, and continuing to oversee it moving forward into this phase.
Can you explain the general layout of Phase 3 that's shown on the screen there?
Sure. It's basically a continuation of the previous two phases for 14 new homes, continuing the street and utilities from Phase 2 that have been stubbed out for that purpose. The property is zoned MXR or CMXR, which requires 15,000 square foot lots and 30 percent open space. We actually are providing a 25,000...
Mark, hold on a second. We need a little mic adjustment here before we get, maybe point that, pull that mic up just a pinch. Yeah.
Closer?
There we go.
There we go. We're actually exceeding the minimum lot size, doing a minimum of 20,000 square feet and a minimum of 38 percent open space in Phase 3. The buffers are being proposed that exceed the requirements and the typical buffers that you see on this type of development.
Mr. Bissel, is this layout the same as beginning on page 15 of the agenda packet?
It is.
And do the plans comply with all applicable UDO provisions?
They do.
Did this development require a traffic study?
No, it's only 14 lots. It's well below the threshold of anything you would require a traffic study for.
And based on feedback from the TRC and planning staff, does this use present any concerns for public health or safety?
No, it doesn't.
Could you explain the zoning conditions and how the plan conforms to those and how the applicant's dealing with those?
Sure. It is, of course, a subdivision. It's a residential subdivision. The lots are all equal to or greater than 20,000 square feet. We are modeling the stormwater to the 100-year storm event. We have been working with Dylan Lloyd of Soil and Water Conservation to explore improving the drainage outlet to the east. He has had numerous conversations with property owners. Those are not, those agreements are not in place, but it, those discussions are ongoing. The, it will be single-family and conformed to the building elevations that were provided previously, and no parking signage will be installed. And Drainage Condition Number 7 actually relates back to Condition 4. The, what we had showed was a map of how that drainage improvement to the east might be implemented, but it relates back to Condition 4, which is dependent on the county being able to acquire the easements or the right of access to make that happen.
And Mr. Bissel...
And those discussions are ongoing. I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, excuse me. And you were also present for the October 2021 hearing of the earlier phases for this development? Okay. And Commissioner Jarvis asked some questions about persons who came to complain about drainage. I believe it was Mr. Kemp's testimony that the county has not received any subsequent complaints about drainage. Are you aware that the applicant has?
No, we haven't received any either.
And there was also discussion about the process of repairing the pipe that was crushed at that point. Can you explain for the board what the staff's...
Right. The replacement of that pipe, as well as one that's located just upstream of, from that, that's undersized, and the relocation of a water line that is actually interfering with the pipe being at the correct elevation now. That construction is all part of the first phase of work that's ongoing at Baxter Station, and those improvements will be completed prior to a final plat for that first phase being submitted.
So, do you have a timeline for when that pipe's going to be repaired?
I would expect that it will be within the next couple of months.
Both of them?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Were you at the community meeting, Mr. Bissel?
I was.
And Dylan Lloyd was there, too?
He was.
And you, and you said that you had received no complaints, but at the community meeting, if I did a correct count, I think eight of the questions dealt with drainage, and one of them was to object to Phase 3 until the problems with existing ditches are corrected. And the response from the applicant says that those ditches aren't really their responsibility, but they're exploring other options. Isn't that a complaint?
Commissioner Jarvis, could you tell us where you're reading from?
I'm reading from the notes of the comments from the community of the page 33 through 34 of the agenda packet, the community meeting minutes, Tuesday, April 25, 2023, updated 5/25/23.
It's my recollection that those complaints had to do with, primarily with the maintenance of the existing pond in Phase 2 that wasn't being properly maintained, because it would require that thing to be drained, and it's going to be, and it was delayed because it's going to be expanded as part of Phase 3. So, it wasn't receiving the kind of maintenance that the other ponds in the subdivision are receiving, and I believe that's...
So, has that been corrected?
No, not at this point.
But you, when you, when you were addressing that, you had said that you would be dealing that when you start Phase 3 with the expansion of the pond. Basically...
Right.
Paraphrasing, you wouldn't be, not going to go mess with this pond until you're ready to tear it apart again and rebuild it.
Well, exactly, because it's going to have to be done again in connection with this, with this phase.
So, Mr. Bissel, is it accurate to say that those improvements will take place prior to the first certificate of occupancy for Phase 1, Phase 3, excuse me?
Yes, they will, prior to the submitting of a final plat, I would say.
Okay. I'd like to move on to our next slide, unless there's any further questions there, and we can come back to questions at the end.
Maybe to further explain the maintenance of existing ditches. If you look at this slide, there's a ditch, actually, it's actually off this slide. It shows you the, a part of a ditch along the north property line that actually straddles the property line. And what we were asked was whether or not the developer had the ability to make improvements to that ditch, which is partially on the Windswept Pines property and partially on the property to the north. And the answer is no, because there's, there's no easement there, and there have been discussions in the past, and there is no ability to acquire right of access to do that.
Is the applicant still in discussions with them, or is that now just the sole job of Dylan Lloyd to be in that discussion with the easement that was discussed in our first hearing in October 4 of 2021?
Well, that is, that's actually a different discussion.
That's the field to the east, right?
That was not part of Condition 4 or Condition 7. That's, that's, that's just something that people would like to see done. And, and I know Dylan has talked about that as well, but that's not really part of this project.
And you guys are, I guess, are willing to do that if your, if permission's granted, you would come in and open that ditch back up and get it flowing properly, is that...
Sure.
Okay.
So, the water goes west-east? The drainage?
The water goes, yeah, it goes both directions. The northern ditch primarily flows to the, to the east and north. The southern ditch flows primarily to the south and west. Anyway, let's...
Well, let's stay on the stormwater side. Do you want to, let's go ahead and explain how stormwater will work as proposed under the special use permit.
All right. So, the, what we're showing here is that we'll comply with Condition 1, which is construction of infrastructure to manage the 100-year storm event, and this shows generally how that stormwater is expected to flow from the lots, to be collected around the backs of the lots, and then detained and expanded stormwater ponds and slowly released to the existing outlets. And we're providing, you know, extra 50-foot-wide buffers in order to have room to actually do some drainage improvements as well. And one of the things that Dylan Lloyd is working, was working on is getting agreements along along, for these property, with these property owners along the southern line, where the Baxter Lane lots back up to this project, there's an old ditch in there that, that needs to be improved, and there's not a good outlet to the east there. In fact, it's, there's a disconnection. And so he actually has agreements with a lot of those people to improve that ditch along the common property line.
Are we talking about Outlet C? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, not exactly.
Okay, well, I'm trying to orient myself north, southeast, and west by your background.
But yeah, that is the southern property line. It, well, yeah, Outlet C adjoins the ditch I'm talking about, but Outlet C isn't where the, the water would, would be taken. We had talked about taking water to the east along that south ditch and then turning it north through Phase Three and connecting it up with the, what you see as Outlet B, and then extending that whole, a whole outlet to the, to the east there, all the way to an outlet. And that is an improvement that is, it was intended and still could be intended to improve the drainage for the whole area. That was not something that we need for Phase Three, but something that the developer had agreed to, to help do if the right of entry could be, could be obtained to do it. So that's, that's really condition four and condition seven.
And then did you also prepare another graphic to illustrate the 100-year storm retention?
I did. And what you're looking at here is kind of a worst-case scenario. What we looked at was what if we needed to retain the 100-year storm on site and not release any water at all until after the, the storm has passed? And this is about what it would look like. We'd have a berm about two and a half feet high that would retain stormwater in this area and then slowly, and then, once the storm had passed, slowly release it. But we know that we don't have to do that because we know that Outlet B, you know, what we're committing to, number two here, is to mitigate peak flows to assure that post-development runoff does not exceed pre-development runoff. And we know that there is some pre-development runoff that goes to Outlet B and that we can release at least that amount of water during the design storm event and retain the rest.
So in the picture that, not this one, but the other, the green is a berm?
That's a berm, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Bissell, based on the layout and the factors you've described, is the community designed in a way susceptible to not endanger the public health or safety and has sufficient stormwater management?
It is, and it will.
Thank you. Let's go back to the plan consistency. Mr. Kemp testified a little bit as to plan consistency, but did you have the opportunity to examine conformity with the land use plan with respect to factor three?
I did.
What did you find?
That it is consistent.
As Mr. Kemp said, it's a G2 controlled growth area, and the future land use map, it's appropriate for single-family up to two units per acre, and of course, we're at less than one unit per acre. Policy 3.1, all new development and redevelopment should connect to county water. We're doing that. It's consistent with environmental policies 1.1, 3.2, 4.5. Stormwater infrastructure 4.1 to support stormwater projects that improve drainage and mitigate flood hazards.
Thank you. And based on policy.
Just the name of you.
Based on the policy site, the staff report and your review, was it also consistent with any policies in the Moyacary small plan, or small area plan?
It is, and it's in the full service area according to the small area plan, which actually allows a density of between 1.5 and three units per acre. So we're, again, well below that at about 0.9 units per acre. Also, policy IS4 on stormwater runoff and being properly managed to reduce flooding and pollution. Also, policy TR2 regarding transitions. It's basically an extension of an existing development with, with similar developments, so it's certainly compatible.
Thank you, Mr. Bissell. I have no further questions of this witness and, and her support.
Mark, you were talking about stormwater and this, this new pond, and people were asking about flooding. Is there, is there currently flooding issues in, from one and two, Phase One and Two? Or is there, is there anything going on that brought those concerns out, or is it just a general?
You know, there were some concerns. I haven't heard of any lately, but you know, the, prior to the Baxter Lane ditch actually being improved and maintained, the ponds in Phases One and Two weren't allowed to properly drain into the, into the outlet. The county worked with DOT and got that, that ditch cleaned out, and the water level went right on down.
Okay.
And then as we continue making improvements to the east end with the culvert replacement and doing some regrading, and we're also regrading that ditch in connection with the, the Baxter Station project and laying it back and, and creating some additional storage capacity there.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Bissell, you're confident that what you have designed with the berm and everything can retain that water in the event of a 100-year flood?
We absolutely could manage the 100-year storm without creating a problem downstream.
Mr. Bissell, what is the county's requirements for stormwater pond capability or capacity?
The county's requirement is to manage the difference between the two-year pre-development runoff and the 10-year post-development runoff.
But what kind of water event, flood event?
So that, that would probably be about 4.3 inches of water.
This, I'm sorry.
Rainfall.
These ponds are being designed for a 100-year flood, but what is the standard county requirement? Is it 100 years? So you're meeting the requirement?
The county's requirement is a 10-year. So we're greatly exceeding the UDO requirement.
And what is 100-year, how much rain is that?
It's about six inches of rainfall.
Okay. Thank you.
Which we get a lot more often than every 100 years.
Than every 100 years.
Further record.
All right. Anything further?
All right. I would, excuse me. This witness has called Mr. Hunter Howell. Can you please state your name and address for the board?
Yes, my name is Hunter Howell, and my office address is 412 East Chatham Street, Cary, North Carolina, 27511.
And can you explain your background and experience for this board?
Yes, I'm a professional real estate appraiser, and I work with Valbridge Property Advisors. I'm licensed in North Carolina as a state certified general appraiser. I'm a member of the Appraisal Institute, and I'm working towards the MAI designation. I have been appraising properties throughout North Carolina for approximately nine years now. And I have also testified as an expert at numerous quasi-judicial hearings at other jurisdictions, testing to the same or similar factors that I'm addressing here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Howell, are you prepared to testify as to real property impacts and harmony of this proposed community with the surrounding area?
I am.
At this time, I'd like to tender, Mr. Howell is an expert in real, of real property appraisal, impacts to real property in harmony with the surrounding properties.
Thank you. Support comfortable with that? Thank you. All right. Thank you. Well.
Mr. Howell, can you explain your role in this project?
Yes, so I was engaged to say the impacts of the project to the value of the drawing property and whether the project is in harmony with the area.
And did you prepare a report with your findings?
I did.
Okay, I'm going to hand you a document. Can you identify this as the report you've prepared?
It is.
May I approach and hand up copies? While those are being distributed, Mr. Howell, can you explain the, how you elevated any impacts on the use to adjoining or budding?
Yes, so I was engaged to say the impacts of this project and how the project of, and how the project to the value of the drawing property and what, whether the project is in harmony with this area. This is similar to other testimonies I've offered to this board, and this is, and the report you're seeing is similar to ones that you have seen from myself before.
And did you evaluate impacts to adjoining or budding land?
I did. So the report, I looked at the surrounding land uses and residential values over the previous three years to determine the market demographics and trends. I also looked at other developments in comparable locations in order to determine the effects of these developments in the area in which they are located. My report analyzed a one, three, and five-mile radius, looking at the population, housing supply, and household income data over the last 10 years with the projections over the next five years. This data is on page three of the report. The population within a three-mile radius is expected to grow annually by approximately 1% over the next five years. And we also analyzed the housing inventory and price per square foot over the last three years. As you can see, there was a sharp decline in home value, in homes available in Moyac starting in 2019, with the price per square foot increasing over the same time period. This indicates that there's additional inventory needed to keep homes affordable in this area.
Thank you. And did you analyze how the proposed use is anticipated to impact the surrounding property values?
I did, yes. So there is generally a positive impact to surrounding properties with this type of development that's proposed. As new residential developments come to areas, it enhances the surrounding areas positively in terms of property values. Typically, increasing home values increases the value of, of available vacant land as developers look to fill the void for additional housing options. This has been seen in several instances across the eastern part of the state. We looked at three large residential subdivisions with master plans in other formerly rural areas and found they, they have tended to increase adjacent land values, and this is on page nine of the report. The proposed development is surrounded by single-family residential dwellings, vacant agricultural land, and residential subdivisions, and it is common for single-family residential developments to be located in the same general area within a particular market. Typically, these developments are clustered beside each other along less-travel corridors in order to keep harmony in use. Larger commercial developments are typically located a short distance away, along higher traffic corridors, limiting the number of vehicles passing these residential developed areas. And based on the proposed density of the development and these tendencies, the use will not injure the adjoining or budding lands.
And if not, based on your examination and professional opinion, the use will not injure the value of those adjoining or budding lands?
Correct.
We looked at similar developments in the media area to determine if the cohesiveness of this development is in line with the pattern, and you can find this on page five of the report. We identified five similar subdivisions in the area, recent developed or approved and under construction. And based on the developments we identified, this project is cohesive and in harmony with the surrounding uses. It is also a continuation of the existing phases, which is also compatible with. So kind of in conclusion here, based on the analysis and report, I found that the proposed use will not injure the value of the adjoining or budding lands and will be in harmony with the area.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Is this graphic on the screen the same graphic on page five of the report?
Yes.
And is that the graphic and evidence you used to draw a conclusion that the proposed use will be in harmony with the area?
It is.
I'd like to admit the report and attachments as exhibit one.
Thank you.
And I have no further questions for this witness and tender of support.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Kevin Kemp to help answer a few questions. Mr. Kemp, could you please state your name and address for the board?
Kevin Kemp, 68 Laurel Woods Way, Currituck, North Carolina.
And what is your role for the county?
I'm the Development Services Director.
And do you oversee the county's staff's preparation for this hearing?
I do.
Did you oversee the preparation of the staff report?
I did.
And do you recognize the excerpt of the staff report that you see there on the screen?
I do.
And is that, is preparation for these hearings and the staff report part of your duties as an employee of the county?
Yes, it is.
And part of your powers as the planning director?
Yes, it is.
As part of the preparation for this case, did staff investigate the current capacity in Currituck County public schools?
Yes, we did.
And is this chart the same chart found on page eight of the staff report?
It is.
And I think you testified earlier that there are three students generated at Moyac Elementary, one student at Moyac Middle, and one at Currituck High. Is that right?
That is correct.
And is that based on what's been referred to as the Tischler Report?
Yes.
And how many elementary students are anticipated under that, per dwelling unit under that method?
Pardon?
How many elementary students are typically generated under the Tischler Report? Is it .25?
.25.
Per dwelling unit?
Per dwelling.
The second paragraph on the screen states, "The two high schools in the county have available capacity to serve the one additional student generated." Do you see that there?
Yes.
Okay. And did staff base that statement on the chart below?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And that chart is titled adequate public facilities schools, right?
Correct.
And the second column there from the left says 2002 to 2000, 2002, 22, 2023 actual capacity. Was that intended to be for the prior school year?
Yes, as we discussed, that is actually 2023 to 2024.
Okay.
So this current school year capacity.
So the numbers in the chart are based on the current capacity for this school year?
They reflect the current capacity, yes.
Okay, thank you. And you gave these numbers, I just want to make sure, in your opening presentation, I just want to make sure I understand how you got there. At the bottom row, let's start with the statement, "The two high schools in the county have available capacity." According to the chart, what is the percentage of actual capacity of Currituck High School for the current school year?
88%.
And based on that percentage, staff concluded there is available public school capacity?
Yes, for the one student generated.
And let's look at the row above. According to the chart, what is the percentage of actual capacity for Moyac Middle?
82%.
And based on the percentage, there is available public school capacity for the one middle school student as well, right?
Correct.
And is that capacity based in part on recent expansions of Moyac Middle?
Yes, Moyac Middle, recent expansion, yeah. It opened up this year to add additional children.
Did that open up before the school year started?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. And according to the chart, what is the percentage of actual capacity of Moyac Elementary for the current school year?
95%.
And based on that percentage, is there available public school capacity for the three elementary school students generated by this use?
Yes, there is.
And is that based also on the recent expansion of Moyac Elementary?
Yes, it is.
And did that open before the start of the school year?
Yes, it did.
So based on the calculations staff has performed, the county has public school capacity to accommodate these five students generated, correct?
Correct.
And that school capacity is in place today?
Correct.
And could you please read the last paragraph just above the chart that begins, "The adequate public schools facilities ordinance requires..."
"The adequate public schools facilities ordinance requires that school capacity be in place at the time of approval or within two years after the initial approval of the special use permit."
Thank you. So the addition of these students will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public schools, is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Kemp, we touched on a lot of these facts. I won't actually go back through them, but if you could skip to the last bullet point and read that for the board, please.
Tulsa Creek Elementary is going through TRC construction drawing review, is projected to open from, for the 2025-26 school year, estimated capacity of 800.
And based on your job with the county in preparation of the report, is that an accurate statement to your knowledge?
Yes, the Tulsa Creek Elementary is currently in our TRC review process.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp, we've covered that under the UDO, you have the duty to provide staff reports. Under 2.2.6, you also have the power to make interpretations of those ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And you have been with the county for how many years?
Two years.
And during that time, how many times have you been called upon to interpret the text of the ordinance?
Several.
Dozens?
I couldn't begin to get the actual number, but it is, it is consistent with my daily duties as director.
Okay. And what was your role prior to taking the position here with the county?
I was the zoning administrator for the city of Virginia Beach.
Do you have any degrees that relate to zoning and planning or development?
I have a master's degree in architecture.
Do you consider yourself to be competent to interpret the Currituck County UDO?
I do.
Thank you. At this time, based on Mr. Kemp's education experience, I'd like to tender him as an expert in planning and the interpretation of the Currituck County UDO.
I do have a question. So, Mr. Kemp, what does it mean in the middle column of the chart on page nine of the agenda packet when it says committed?
Well, I think first, maybe you should address the tendering of Kevin Kemp as an expert, decide that first before questions are asked.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any objection to accepting his?
Is there any objection?
No.
No, thank you.
I just have two more questions, and then we'll go right back to yours, if that's all right. Mr. Kemp, did you rely on that expertise? Mr. Kemp, did you rely on that expertise in answering all the previous questions?
Yes.
And if I ask those questions again, you'd answer them all the same way, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness and tender him to Commissioner Jarvis.
What do we mean when we say on the middle column there, committed capacity?
Well, actual capacity is the number of students that show up. Committed capacity deals more with, you know, the number of properties and students assigned to that school if every student went. There's many reasons why some, you know, every student does not go to that school. So that looks more at the total development in that area versus the actual students that go to the school.
Okay, so if every lot was built, we would be at that number?
Correct, yes. That's what that looks at. The actual capacity is what we see.
And I brought this out the last meeting, I can't even remember what the, that, that projection is based on the Tischler study, correct?
Correct.
Which if, is not always been, let me rephrase that. We have lots of, the Tischler numbers have been remarkably accurate over history, right?
Yes, they have.
Projecting expected student load. However, we've had all kinds of other subdivisions that have come in, or family subdivisions, unrestricted, one lots here, one lots here, you know, that don't fall under this Tischler study analysis, yet, as I pointed out then, I think we're more accidental in hitting the Tischler accuracy than actually using that as a projection. And specifically, you know, some of these neighborhoods that we expect to see a whole bunch of students get on a school bus, there aren't that, that many students getting on the school bus. Enough, only to say, the Tischler study, I am tired of using the Tischler study because I think it's accidental more than it's actually legitimately accurately projecting. The original purpose of the Tischler study, and Owen, you were, you were there when Mr. Tischler was born. But the actual purpose of the Tischler study was more as a planning tool, not as a development and approval tool. It was more of a tickler for county planning staff to, I mean, we used to get the committed capacity, and we need to start looking for land, and hence our frustration that it took us five years to actually find some. Sorry for that quantification.
All right. Well, thank you for reminding us.
For the record.
All right.
At this time, I'd like to ask that the presentation, staff report, agenda, and all of the recordings be admitted into evidence regarding this presentation.
Thank you.
Happy to summarize the evidence now, or if there's any other comments?
Well, we have one person signed up for public, for the hearing, seeing that was not with your group, so I do have to open that up. So maybe afterwards summarize.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
All right. So I have all of your team signed up, including yourself, Ms. Swager. I'm assuming you do not want to speak. All right. I have, is it Richard Calhoun?
Oh, sorry about that. I thought it was his last name.
All right. So you don't want to come up this evening? Okay, all right, thank you. Well, that was the only other person I had signed up this evening that wasn't part of the presentation. Is there anyone in the room that would like to come up this evening and be heard? All right, seeing no one, I will close down that portion of it. And Ms. Swager, since no one popped up?
Thank you for your patience tonight and your attention. We appreciate the time before the board and submit that we've proved each of these elements under factor 2.4.6D with competent material and substantial evidence. The use permit will not endanger the public health or safety. You heard from the expert testimony from Mr. Bissell that the proposed uses meet all of the UDO requirements. It will not endanger the public health or safety or cause significant stormwater management improvements, and those have all been designed to mitigate concerns raised. We did hear some testimony about the timing of those, but it was submitted that all of those improvements will be in place before the final plat, and so there is a mechanism under the county's development regulations to take care of that, and that those concerns were raised prior to some of the improvements being made. Mr. Kemp testified that they haven't received any similar recent complaints, and Mr. Bissell echoed that fact. As a fact, as to factor two, Mr. Howell testified that the proposed use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, based on not only eastern North Carolina trends, but specific comparable designs in Currituck County. Number three, that the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other official adopted plans. Mr. Bissell cited the portions of the zoning ordinance where this board has found the plan that is conformed with the Imagine, Imagine Currituck Land Use Plan and the Moyac Small Area Plan. Mr. Kemp echoed those facts, and both men were accepted as experts, as well as Mr. Howell was tendered as an expert. And finally, with the factor four, not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate school facilities, Mr. Kemp, based on his expertise and his authority to investigate and provide facts with respect to school capacity, testified that the staff report confirmed that elementary, middle, and high schools handling these five potential students generated by the development have adequate capacity per UDO 2.4.6. He was tendered and accepted as an expert, and there is no competent material or substantial evidence offered in opposition. And as a result, North Carolina law requires that the board find that if the evidence presented on those four factors by the experts tendered and accepted by the board is competent material and substantial, and any contrary, contrary evidence does not rise to the level of that same magnitude, then the board is required to entitle the, excuse me, approve the special use permit here tonight. We've met our burden and would appreciate the board making a motion to approve our permit here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good with the motion tonight? Normally, we have our motion sheets just for the general public so that we don't screw anything up and misread anything. We didn't have any this evening, so with that being said, if the board is comfortable with making a motion with the conditions, or do we need to bring that back at our next meeting to have it drawn up so that we capture the conditions that the applicant would proffer and we would want to see?
I think Mr. Kemp can probably help us through what we need.
Can you bring up the conditions from your presentation?
I would like to make one comment, if I may. I was looking at the roster of the community meeting, and the three that live on Alden Run, they're phase one and two of the original Windswept Pines subdivision, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So they were talking about the stormwater. The two on Neck Road, that's in Chesapeake, and the Snoozy Manor is two developments away, and Richard Shaw Road is behind the Hardee's.
Okay.
So you had three of the attendees that were actually part of that subdivision.
You don't know who, it doesn't tell you who made what comments, right?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
I would, but like I said, I would imagine the three from Alden Run concerned about the expansion of the stormwater ponds that are to take place in this phase.
All right, well, we have finished this hearing at this point, and so we need to take action on this one way or the other. I'll look at the board for a motion for or against.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on a move that we approve PB 16-06 Windswept Pines. There were six conditions that Mr. Kemp listed that I feel like have been met with the various policies that he outlined as part of what we should have as the approval process, and that the four factors that we are to consider have been met by competent material testimony.
What about this, this number seven drainage? If they're able to get access to that, would you like to add that they would?
I will add number seven, that if that is acquired, that that would be a tremendous improvement and be welcomed.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
I second it.
Thank you. So are you guys clear on that?
Is that a mandatory condition?
Seven, only if they can get it.
So that's not mandatory?
Non-mandatory.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Carrie, so thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess and get Kevin back in here and continue on with the night. All right, let's get back into this meeting this evening. Onto new business. Item one, ordinance amendment of section 3-66, naming potentially dangerous dog appellate board. I know this is something you're...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is an ordinance amendment that we discussed at the retreat recently. Our current ordinance names the Currituck County Board of Health to hear any appeal of a dangerous dog determination. So what that looks like is typically an animal control officer will deem a dog dangerous, and there's different guidelines that they look at in the general statutes. And what that would mean for the dog is they have to be constrained a certain way. I think they have to be muzzled when they are out and about, things like that. But the, the dog owner can appeal that determination. And right now, it's rare that this happens, but right now, the Currituck County Board of Health is named, which really doesn't exist. I mean, we have the regional health department, and recently, we ran into an issue where they did not want to hear one of these appeals. And so the statute allows this board to name either one person or a group of people to serve in that capacity, to hear these appeals. Again, they're very rare. So this amendment would take out the Currituck County Board of Health and add the language that we discussed at the retreat, which is a panel of three members of the Currituck County Animal Services and Control Advisory Board that were not involved in the initial determination. And then I just clarify that the hearing before that appellate board shall be a quasi-judicial hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, I talked with Rachel about this, because I'm the commissioner that sits on the animal advisory board, and we picked two, and myself, like I said, because if we put somebody out there, if it was three of the board members and somebody doesn't like the results, and they try to call and harass the person or whatever, that they can just, I'm going to be the contact, they can call and harass me, I don't care, so. But like I said, so we figured, we deemed myself and two others.
Okay.
If the boards go with that.
All right. I'm just out of curiosity, is this, would this board be open to the public? Is this, would this, okay, just, it doesn't say.
Yes.
Just curious, okay.
I know Pasquetank, I talked to Pasquetank, because they're a little different than us, because animal control is their own here. Pasquetank, they fall under them. He said they have a few cases a year where somebody, either is the dog deemed that or where whatever, and he said they might have like, you know, one or two. So it's not a lot.
Right, yeah, I think it's rare.
Be rare that you guys are constituted to get to wear that hat in one of the seven or eight, 10, 12 you got.
And that determination also, that appellate board, that can be appealed to Superior Court, so that's also not the end-all be-all of that determination.
All right. All right. Well, how about, is there any other discussion on this?
So the animal control officer is the one that will make the charge?
Yes. So they cannot then be involved on that appellate board?
On the vote.
Exactly. That's why there's language in there that says whoever those people are, they were not involved in the initial determination, because inherently, that's a conflict of interest.
So will it be like a quasi-judicial board?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Any further questions? We have a motion.
For approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on. An ordinance amendment to section 10-64, the beach parking violation fee. Again, we have Ms. Megan up for that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is an ordinance we discussed at the retreat, and the, the main concern was to, or the main goal, was to increase the fine. Currently, the fine for someone that, someone who does not have a parking permit is $75. So I, you gave me, you all gave me direction to increase that to $100. So that's the main difference. In addition, there's some language added that it's also a violation of the section, which the sworn law enforcement officer can seize a permit that has been sold, conveyed, or leased to another individual who did not receive the permit lawfully pursuant to this section, because there's been issues where those permits have been transferred, sold, things like that. So, so there's more particular language now in the ordinance that would prohibit that.
Is leasing the same thing as renting?
Yes.
Okay, just as a legal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I have one. So like, somebody wants to give their pass, and when we say leasing or whatever, I'm trying to scroll down to it, because I was on another screen, but they want to give, what page, Commissioner Jarvis?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. So somebody wants to give their pass to...
Cousin Eddie?
Yeah, Cousin Eddie comes in town in his RV. Hopefully, he'll air that down before he takes it out there, but no, so seriously, they want to come down and they let them use their pass.
That's not, that's not what we're talking about. This is to take the for, the for-profit part of it out.
Okay. Cool, I just was making sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, no, and I had that discussion with Megan this, this morning, that, you know, having, having the ability to have a guest visit you is, is a different animal entirely, so, and utilize that as a resident of this county.
The $100 fee for the parking, that is for not having a parking pass. So I know we had talked about going, because we were 75 for everything, if they're speeding on the beach, it was 75, civil penalty, or they could get a state citation. So the civil penalties for violations of stuff on the beach, are we, I know that's not, are we going to do like the?
Still 75. This is just if you don't have the permit.
Just for the parking pass.
Yep, it's just the parking pass.
More than what it would cost them to get it.
And the only, like I said, so we'll have to make another book, just, which is fine. So we'll just have those, or, because it says like, in big and bold, you've seen the price, so. So it's 100, if they don't have the pass, it's $100, and all the other fees and fines are 75.
And you might be able to use the current books and just maybe mark it, I know it's big, but you might be able to mark it out and add in that other section at the bottom $100. I mean...
We'll get some parking pass, money, any books.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I said, the books, I mean, like I said, they can put, I mean, it's the same vehicles, they put them in the vehicles, and if, you know, so, like I just want, so it's 175, not 175, but it's 100 for the, and then, and 75 for any other violations.
That's right.
All right, cool, thank you.
All right, well, since this one's my district, if there's no further discussion, I will move for approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on, Operation Green Light for Veterans. This is near and dear to Ms. Selena's heart.
Am I going to talk about it? This, okay. This is the second year that I have encouraged our county to participate in Operation Green Light for Veterans. I don't know if it's most appropriate for me just to read the resolution or just talk about it, it's probably going to take about the same amount of time. But the gist of it is that the National Association of Counties came up with this and encourages all counties across the United States to light up public buildings with green to support veterans in the weeks approaching Veterans Day. We did this last year. I think it is a great testament to the many, many veterans in our county that we respect and that bring so much life and knowledge and just expertise in so many areas to our county. That is a very small gesture that we can do as a county to let them know that they are appreciated, they are honored by simply lighting our buildings. And Mr. McCree, are we going to do the courthouse and the public safety buildings, or are there plans for other buildings, or just those two? plans for other buildings, or just those two?
Probably just those two, like we did last year.
Okay. And of course, there is a, a small encouragement in this resolution for individuals to also put a green light out to, to join the, the trend of putting a green light for veterans. So I'll just read now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as Green Light for Veterans County. Currituck County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November eleventh, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Currituck County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who've made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in the window of their places of business or residence from November sixth through November twelfth, 2023.
All right. Is that a motion for approval?
Sure.
All right. Well, Mr. Kitty seconds. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just really quick, those ordinance amendments do require unanimous votes. So we'll have to do a second motion next meeting, as long as we have the rest. Well, it only requires a majority vote, the next reading.
Right, some majority. Okay, thank you for the reminder. Next up, we have board appointments for Corroda Rose. These are consensus. Any, anybody good with the appointments?
Can I add one thing? Not that it, I mean, but far as his title, like if there was something that came on there, Neil Smith is actually a captain. So it would be Captain Neil Smith on that for him.
Okay.
I just noticed that when I was looking at it.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we have Kimberly Hoy, Bob Gellum, TJ English, Vance Hyland, and Jay Loft Miller are the people who should be reappointed at this time, and I will move to, to reappoint them. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is Consent Agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that needs to be discussed?
Motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, closed session. I'll move to recess a regular board of commissioners meeting and move to move us into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1186 to discuss personnel matters. Have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all. We'll.